Starting now.
And I am expecting Quinn. But we have a little smaller group tonight. I call the September 28th, 2022 Bremerton City Council Study Session to order. The study session is open to the public to listen in, but there will be no opportunities for input. And the content of these items is subject to change and no action is anticipated. And note that tonight's agenda was amended to remove item A three, which has been rescheduled to the October 26th study session. If remaining items are approved by the council, they they will be placed on the October 5th, 2022 city council meeting agenda. Vice Council Vice President Jennifer Chamberlain and Council Member Jeff Coughlin are absent tonight. And Council Member younger said he might need to leave the meeting, but he will, he will do his best not to drop us out of a quorum. Okay. So up first is Internal Services Manager Chris Mottner is here to present the purchase of 2023 vehicles and equipment. Take away Mr. Mottner.
Good evening, Council President, City Council Mayor and others. I am here to present the purchase approval of 2023 vehicles and equipment. Included as a supplementary document to the presentation is narrative notes. And I have elaborated to this to address questions and concerns that were brought up from the Public Works Committee meeting of last week on September 20th. So I will go through the narrative and it'll touch on other issues that were brought up at that time. This is a newly developed vehicle purchasing process being proposed due to issues with ongoing shortages, order delays and cancellations that has greatly affected the city's vehicle fleet. This concept was thoroughly discussed with finance, department directors, chiefs and others, and their vehicle and equipment requirements were fully defined for current needs and operations. These proposed vehicle replacements are all per the known E R R replacement schedule projected for 2023. This new process with the approved purchase authorization is a solution to issues concerning the high level of cost escalation that has occurred over the last 12 months, which has been a significantly greater rate than general inflation. The vehicle purchasing market has gotten much more expensive over the last year or so. There are new state government changes that allow D E S vehicle purchase order banks to close without notice and limit production amounts due to vehicle manufacturing constraints. City E S D staff have an online state contract notification service to review current purchase availability, order bank closures and other vehicle order information. This is reviewed almost daily to ensure correct city vehicle ordering as they become available and to plan purchases and order strategies as efficiently as possible. With the this new vehicle purchase approval by council, we will have the ability to place vehicle orders as they become available on the Washington State D E S procurement listing. Basically ensuring our orders and our place in the production lines early for new vehicles and equipment. This process with council approval will secure E R R replacement vehicle orders in advance. There are, these are all known planned for replacements per the established E R R 2023 schedule. Within this order are six police patrol interceptor vehicles that replace older police patrol sedan cars with new police pursuit rated interceptor models designed specifically for police use and functionality. The older police sedan cars are too small for current police gear and other required equipment and police pursuit rated cars are no longer available for purchase. Only these all wheel drive S U V police interceptor utility hybrids are available, which is the city standard for the police. There are three fire department vehicles that will replace two first generation hybrid S U Vs that are utilized by the Fire Marshal's Office for inspections, violation and arson investigations and other required Fire Marshal Division tasks. These are on-call 24 hour duty vehicles. The vehicle type has changed from S U V hybrid to full electric pickup truck with canopy shell beans, a smaller S U V size does not allow for the required fire tools and equipment and does not keep the full separation of fire bunker gear if smoke or other contaminants are present. The new all-electric Fire Marshal office trucks will reduce operating costs and fossil fuel usage. The other vehicle within the fire department for replacement is the Expedition to be replaced with a three-quarter ton pickup with canopy shell and set up with shelving in the rear for easy access to the required gear that this battalion chief command vehicle needs such as rescue gear, incident command essentials, safety and P P E, as well as other specialty equipment, which was hard to access and keep in organized condition in the Expedition model. And was overloaded by all of that equipment. Also, this expedition has a bad engine pending repair or replacement considerations. The reason for what appears as low miles for this vehicle is that it has extremely high run hours from idling at emergency incidents and accidents. There are three parts department vehicles and equipment. One is a replacement of a worn out small size pickup with an electric pickup truck for general parks operations and administrative use. One is a replacement of a one-ton truck with a more practical use one-ton extended cab truck with a dump bed and a snowplow package. This is required for the many diverse parks, maintenance and operations tasks and is heavily used by staff. Also, those will allow snow removal of parks, property lots, roads and can assist public works during inclement weather events as needed. The mower equipment is to replace a high hours worn out unreliable mower with a new five-foot deck contour mower for increased mowing efficiency and will provide stability on slope surfaces. Next are the five street division vehicles and equipment. One is a replacement of a worn out extremely high mileage, small size pickup truck with an all-electric pickup truck for general street operations and other related uses. One is a replacement of a high mileage one-ton truck with a like kind equipped with a lift gate option that will be used for safe lifting of materials, street supplies and maintenance tools. Also included for streets are two pieces of heavy equipment. One is a pavement roller and the other is an asphalt paper. Both are older units, high hours and their poor condition and reliability is affecting asphalt pavement projects. Both to be replaced with light kind of equipment that will perform better, be more efficient and prove dependable for street improvement projects. There is an equipment trailer replacement with like kind with a tilt bed option that is required for most street machinery, equipment hauling. Next on the replacement list is a different van for B cat operations. This old minivan, the old minivan has met replacement criteria and is unreliable and not equipped properly for current B cat activities. The new Transit Connect midsize van will allow for the required secure storage and transport of camera and filming equipment. At the time of research of this replacement, an all-electric or plug-in hybrid was not available, but E S D staff will check into this as an option and will work with B cat staff to evaluate functions, charging capabilities, and if possible, change to an electric or hybrid model at time of order. There are five weight water division vehicles for replacement with three being in poor condition and replaced with like kind vehicles. There is also one replacement of a half-ton pickup with an all-electric pickup truck for utility operations and duties and a replacement of an old work van with a high mileage and condition issues to be replaced with a new transit cargo van set up with an electrician gear package, which is needed for the function of this vehicle used within the Water Resources Division. Next on the list are two replacements within the wastewater division. One is a like kind one-ton work truck with service body and the other is a three-quarter ton work truck with service body to replace a one-ton service dump body truck. Both have met the replacement criteria with high mileage and poor condition. These are used by the wastewater treatment plant staff for major maintenance and improvement projects at the treatment plants and sewage lift stations. Lastly, on the list is one vehicle replacement for the stormwater utility. This is a half-ton pickup truck to be replaced with an all-electric pickup truck for stormwater operations and maintenance tasks. It replaces a vehicle that was recently involved in a collision. I want you to know that all of these replacements have been thoroughly evaluated by Equipment Services staff. The condition, the maintenance and service records check and all meet or exceed the replacement criteria per city policy, which is included in your packet as a supplementary document. The replaced vehicles and equipment will be surplus and sold or used as equipment trade-ins for the best value as possible. Sell will be by public auction services locally or through govdeals.com. We expect 17,000 to 20,000 in surplus sales or trade-in value for these replaced city vehicles and equipment. Also on this list for purchase approval are new vehicles to the city's fleet. This is typical to this annual vehicle purchase request. There is a new high-performance, single-engine street sweeper that meets current federal tier-five emission controls and is a regenerative air unit that provides air blast to dislodge dirt and debris fro for improved street cleaning and increased efficiency. This sweeper will replace the age troublesome worn-out wastewater backup spare sweeper. This new street sweeper purchase is required as a second sweeper to maintain the city's street sweeping action plans and to fulfill requirements set forth in the SWIP program. Men with the many miles of streets and roads added to the city by new developments, annexation and road construction. This sweeper is needed for daily tasks as well as for full use within when the primary sweeper is down for service or repairs. There is a new go-for all-electric parking enforcement vehicle equipped with an L P R system for downtown parking enforcement operations. This smaller vehicle will have the ability to maneuver within the on-street parking areas with minimal impacts to vehicle or pedestrian traffic. There is a new Maverick pickup truck for the Department of Community Development for use on the increased project inspections, code enforcement and other department operations. This is to be a front-wheel-drive hybrid model. Within this purchase request, there are seven all-electric vehicles, seven hybrid vehicles that correspond to the city council's goals and expectations. In your presentation packets are the replacement justifications and the vehicle purchase summary that shows the anticipated replacement costs of vehicles and equipment as presented. Please know that we will receive best pricing from the Washington State D E S procurement contract when ordering these as approved. E R R reserve funds are sufficient for the purchase of 2023 replacement vehicles and equipment as presented here this evening. Thank you for your time and I am available to answer any questions.
Thanks. You want to run through those one more time? Just kidding. And if I just to understand too, what we're looking to do is to authorize these so you can grab them as they come available. As opposed to sometimes we would see these throughout the year and these are all in this year's budget. Is that a correct statement?
They're, they were actually projected for 2023 and we're hoping to get approval.
Right.
Now for for purchase as they do come available, get our line, get our place in line of the production and and move forward as as possible due to the lengthy delays.
Okay, and okay. Because of that, likely most of these purchases will happen next year.
And yes, or we'll receive them next year. We might be able to place the order. Our hope is to place the order in late 2022 as these become available on the order banks again. And then, but the actual receiving of the vehicles and stuff will be late 2023, most likely for for these, yes.
Right. And do, when do we usually pay for these when we upon receipt or on order?
We would pay for these on order.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. You know, like I said, funds are sufficient and available through the E R R fund five-ten.
All right. Well, I'm not seeing any hands. Any council members have questions or concerns? Oh, now we go. Okay. Denise.
I believe that Councilmember Mokler sits on Public Works. Is that correct, Anna? And maybe if you have something to say first, I want to hear your perspective before I might answer my question.
Let's go ahead and Anna.
What a very courteous human being you are, Counselor Fry. Um, yeah. You're very courteous too, Mr. Mottner. We're all just chock full of courtesy. So thank you so much for expanding on the the letter that you sent first to Public Works and it was then distributed to the rest of the counselors. I was reading along, you know, with my score. And I noticed that you inserted an entire paragraph after the first paragraph. And then very extremely largely enlarged the second paragraph. And I was wondering if it would be possible for us to get them in written form. Yeah, good. Because I got to tell you, Mr. Mottner, there is no way I'm going to retain every single scrap of what you just said. I need to see it in front of me. So that was my first thing.
Yes, I I will get that together and send as soon as possible. And just kind of wanted to let you know that also within the new version was the more of the recent for the replacements as well. I I tried to hit on everyone, so.
I think you did Sterling. For those who haven't been following with, you know, caught breath, I I asked Eric several questions, which he forwarded to Tom Nucky. And the expanded text that we heard tonight is largely in response to that, which is why are there, it was a question about the number of electric vehicles. Well, what was the purpose within each department for these vehicles and why there were so many upgrades? And Chris just explained that, Mr. Mottner, is it okay if I call you Chris in study session?
Yes.
Thank you. Chris just explained that at great length, but I'm still trying to figure something out. I'm not going to say I am a newbie. But you know, just understand that it's true. So I'm looking at the city of Bremerton equipment, the E R R that you made, to which you made reference that we've all had since the packet came out. And I'm looking at the vehicle replacement criteria. I'm not looking at it with an attempt to leap on public works and say jacques use. I'm just looking at it to try to figure this out. So the small cars like that would be the 2007 Royal Crown Victoria. Is that considered a small car?
That is listed under police line car.
That was used as a police line car?
Right, yeah.
My goodness.
Yep. And the only ones on the police that weren't considered as police line cars is a Ford Taurus 1538, which is a police staff detective car.
Okay, so not so much necessary for the pursuit?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so here in the vehicle replacement criteria, it's calling for us expected service life of 12 years and a mileage of 120,000 miles for small cars and trucks. 15 years and 150 miles for medium trucks. And a maintenance history that's 50% of residual value in any given year for each of them. So here I'm just saying. There seems to be a discrepancy between the criteria on this page and the mileage that you gave in that genormous database that was also part of our packet. So I'm, I'm just asking, how does that work?
Sure. So, so, for example, the police vehicles on the on sheet one of the replacement justification. So, so as you see, the the replacement age for those is 1012. So they all meet that criteria. And then the mileage is low, but the hours are high on those vehicles on engine life and and stuff because of the idling time at at calls and whatnot. But the maintenance history is what causes this criteria to be met for due to the unreliable condition, the service records of of each of the vehicles were evaluated and and this was how these were. They came up as a replacement and then reviewed for replacement. So those were evaluated at that time.
Yeah, I see. There's not even a requirement for maintenance history on the police line cars, only on the police staff cars. That seems like a very realistic establishment of criteria. Okay. The other thing that I wanted to ask about was so in again, the same document, the E R R. It says, if you're going to do an upgrade, the department head will complete the justification that identifies the gain deficiencies. So is that, is that, are those documents somewhere around that we access?
That though, the official document is not in writing, it was through meetings that we had with department heads and chiefs and everyone in preparation for this. So, so that is not filled out except what we know of from discussions with with department heads, managers, chiefs and others to come up with this list and evaluation. So that could also be attached in there. I did see where it calls for that. As you know, the department head would fill out that criteria form, but I do not have that, no.
Okay. I am going, I may I like stop commenting at this point and yield to Counselor Fry to Denise and reserve the right to come back later? Can I do that?
Director Nucky, though.
Oh, well, I'll yield to whoever you want me to yield to, Michael. Okay.
Just one clarification. I think I heard a misstatement. So when we, when we place the order for the vehicles, we'll pay kind of an old deposit, but we actually pay for the vehicles upon delivery, upon receipt. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thanks. Denise.
I see that Mike Riley is on the phone or on on Zoom. And I'm wondering, Mike, what are you seeing generally? I know that when we see the budget or when you start meeting with us around budget. One thing I'm preparing myself for is the impact of all the inflationary expenses. I mean, we've been hearing a lot of this in different in different ways, different situations. And I'm just wondering, do you have a ballpark figure about a direct impact that, you know, forces beyond our control, meaning, you know, whether it's supply chain, just cost of things and then inflation. Are you, what, what kind of trend are you seeing?
It's a good, a good question. So it's not one, one straight line of across everything. Different goods and services are seeing different impacts as Chris talked, you know, just, just, I think tonight already we're seeing inflationary impacts on vehicles and prices are up and or a police fleet for fully outfitted car, you can see what they cost. They between $80,000 and $90,000 where a couple of years ago, we're at 65 fully outfitted. So we're putting those factors into place and we built this, but this presentation and also in the in the budget for 20. So when we go to the, it's kind of awkward because we did this mid-year to be able to get ahead of the orders that was talked about, I think. Last year is what we plan to do. And then in this budget, you actually be seeing a fleet order for 2024 to get appropriate budget authority for next year, mid-year to order the 24 cars. So yeah, we're looking, you know, 10, 15, in some cases, 20% increases is what we're seeing. Hopefully, we're going to start seeing that come down. But right now, we haven't seen that yet. I believe, I I hope in the 24, we'll see it kind of tip over a little bit. There is some pressure because of interest rates on vehicles that are starting to slow, but this, this package, Chris and Chuck and Tom Nucky have really come over that pretty, pretty closely to try to get these orders as soon as possible. Did not see that next rate increase. Something we were just purchasing has a rate increase on 10, one of 15%. So moving forward, someone we're working on with fire. So that is programmed in the budget that is all across our, our supplies and services.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll do a second round.
Excuse me. Anybody else? Eric care to jump in before me?
So my comments is normally for that education of everyone that hasn't been through this process before. The city, I think, as Michael mentioned, is doing it a little different approach. I'm not necessarily against it. I understand the reasoning. But normally what happens is during the budget process, which would be about one month from now. The Chris would go ahead and mention all these vehicles during the budget process, usually during public works. And when they meet that that day and go over all the vehicle lists and the justifications. And the council kind of gives a yes or no head nod. Then it goes in the budget for formal voting on in November, early November. And then what happens is throughout the year as the city places an order, they'll say, oh, by the way, we'd like to place this order and this was already approved in the budget. So now they're getting in front of it and saying, council, you approve this. It will be then considered part of the 2023 budget. So in a way, in effect, we're approving part of the 2023 budget one month ahead of time. Having said that, the E R R fund is a sinking fund. So many, many years ago, we didn't always do things that way. So then you'd have to pay as you go. You need a new car. You you basically, for lack of better terms, make payments on it. I have to come up with the money. So instead, what the city did is they said, okay, you have a police interceptor. You want to replace that 10 years from now, whatever the expected life plan expectancy is. The police department will pay a pro-rated share approximately 10% if it's in 10 years. So they have money set aside for when they want to replace the vehicle. So my understanding, Mr. Mottner, is that you're saying that the E R R fund is fully funded, these purchases. It's already in the E R budget. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct. And my understanding with conversations with Mike about this and that is fully funded for the replacements from the reserves.
And so then that begs the question, we talk about inflationary environment. Mike Riley, what kind of inflation factor do you use in the E R R fund to make sure we don't run short when it comes time to replace the vehicle?
So typically, I'll say typically, we've been running about a three and a half percent inflation factor. Now with the newest, latest and greatest, we've had to increase that and then reset the targets on the vehicles, the actual cost and project over the life of those. So we've up there, you've actually doubled that for now about 7%. I don't want to put a 15% factor or a 21% factor in there. But we did double, we did double it.
Okay. My other comment is that those Ford Lightnings are hot items. I mentioned this in public works. If I could do a backflip, I'd offer to do a backflip if you pick up a Ford Lightning next year. Okay. Now, having said that, what's interesting, the Ford business model, if you follow what's going on in the automotive world, they want to separate their electric vehicle business from their gas business or gas traditionally combustible engine business and sell direct. So we, so dealers aren't price scouting. You buy direct from the factory. So I don't expect if you want to buy a Ford Lightning now, you're going to have to pay a huge premium or buy one on the secondary market. So good luck, city. Hang on to your current vehicles, which I'm sure you will. We'll get another 10,000 miles out of them in another year. Because you're not getting a Lightning next year, but challenge me, maybe you will. So good luck.
Right.
Michael, I'm so sorry. And I, that was totally bad protocol, protocol, whichever, however you pronounce it. Anyhow, I I'm just going to say that on this one, I I think that information that it was written down that Chris Mottner spoke at great length wasn't available to us for review before this meeting. And I, I think it would have been useful to us to have it. And if there is, you know, I'm, I'm like a rules type human. If there's a a requirement of this policy that the department head will complete a justification that identifies the gain deficiencies, I think we should have them. So I'm just vote, you know, I'm just expressing that I think we should follow the protocol. And I, my comments here are all done. So that we can do the oversight that it So that we can do the oversight that it seems to keep calling for in, in all of these policies.
All right, anyone else? So is the, um, the, does the, is this justification, is it a form or is it, uh?
It is locate, the justification form is located on cap C O B, cap W E V, cobweb.
Yeah.
Now you know what I know.
It sounds like we may have not been using those maybe for a while, Chris, go ahead.
Um, just, uh, also, uh, bring something up, this, uh, this E R R, uh, policy is quite dated. And I am in the process, uh, one of the things that, uh, Tom uh, Nucky, uh, gave to me when I took this position was to update that policy and, and I begun that process. It is quite dated and some of this isn't real practical um, for that and, and it doesn't list all of the criteria points that should be listed as well as all types of vehicles, so. Uh, just to let you know, I am, uh, working towards a new policy that will be, uh, updated and approved upon and presented to council for approval, um, through the mayor's, uh, authority, so. Uh, just enough while I on that.
All right, thank you. Well, I, I do think that, um, just in my time on council, are the process of, uh, uh, approving, uh, vehicles for purchase, I just think it's continued to get better um, every year, and now it seems like you guys are trying to stay ahead of, ahead of the game sort of, of car buying, so. Uh, thanks for all your time in this and, um, uh. Council, how would we like to treat this?
I'm good with consent.
I won't be able to attend next week's meeting, it's Yom Kippur, so I would like to go to general business, but since I won't be there. It'll have to, you know, I can't hold everything up for a meeting that I'm not gonna attend.
Okay, but let's, I think, I think your concerns were definitely heard. And I think that sounds like, um, Mr. Motner is working on, uh, improving the process. Um, so I, I, I don't, I don't see. I don't see us talking about this helping to make any difference in this, um, sort of like the toothpaste is somewhat out of the two. Uh, Denise?
I'm just wondering, these forms, how, uh, how much time would, would it take to complete uh, these forms that council member and, uh, Mokler and Chris Motner was, were talking about, would it be possible by the time we approve it to have these forms filled out? It, it, it seems to me that the content of it, we, we're, we know that they're, uh, that, that they've gone through the process, but I don't know how much time would be involved, and so I would certainly understand if it can't be done, you know, by next week.
My take on that would be that the, the, um, spirit of the form was conducted at a, it sounds like around a table, uh, in a meeting and, um. They would just be going retroactively, I mean, he pretty much car by car told us in the form that says the stuff, um, so I, I just don't know if there's any value in that. Going, you know, going back and filling out, um. It's just, literally just paperwork, so.
It, 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 it gets you into the habit, you know, I, uh, I, I tend to wanna make a correction and get everybody on the bandwagon and start doing it, but as I said. You know, if this can't be done, what I don't want is for it to disappear and have us having a same, the similar conversation, whatever. I completely trust Chris Motner that you're gonna fulfill this directive. I don't think there's any, uh, uh, you know, angst about that, it's just like why not just do it if we can do it and get it on record as having you know, abided by the policy, I mean, it's a, it's a policy that we have and so, but if it's, you know, I certainly understand if it can't be done before next week and, but that, I won't say anything else.
Uh, I so would say, my thought is that the, um. It seems like we've not been using the forms, so maybe that is part of the outdated part of the thing. So, and I, I would also just fall to administration to say, you know, maybe we just asked administration, uh, mayor, department head to say, please look at this. And, you know, we have to be in the, we have to be in the habit of doing what we say we're gonna do. And, uh, but this could also fall under housekeeping, maybe it's a form that, a process that they wanted to update, but obviously it's not one of the more you know, it's, it's not like a life saving, safety kind of thing that we change very quickly. So Quinn, go ahead.
Thanks, uh, yeah, it's weird that I'm an attorney and I'm much more of a spirit of the law versus the letter of the law kind of person. Uh, it's just my style, um, yeah, i- i- if I'm understanding these forms correctly, it seems like it would just be extra work for folks where we already have them on the record for the reason that we would need to replace these, these vehicles, so. Um, I, I, I'm not gonna look at the forms and I don't care.
Yeah, I, I would say I agree, and if the administration or the department wants to get them and get them filed there. I think that I would leave them in control of that. I feel like we've been answered with the questions, um, about replacement criteria at the level that I think that we need to, uh, understand, so. Okay, set it for discussion, so it sounds like we're still good with consent? All right. All right, thank you, uh, thank you, Chris. Up next, Water Utility Manager Kami Applebeck is here to present, uh, Goods and Services Agreement with Cummings Incorporated for provision of generators for Anderson Creek Well Field Pump Station Two, Well Six R and Well Number Eight. Kami?
Thank you, good evening, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, the water utility developed an emergency power plan to identify critical facilities in need of onsite backup power to ensure a reliable supply of water during emergencies. In the nineties, uh, the water utility purchased generators from multiple manufacturers, um, first Generac and then Kohler. However, since two thousand, we've switched to the Cummings generators due to their superior performance and dependability. The utility has eight backup generators installed so far and intends to install approximately eight more. Uh, that includes the three I'm presenting, uh, tonight. Uh, to complete our emergency power plan implementation by twenty twenty-four. This agreement provides for the manufacturer, delivery, startup and load bank testing of three emergency backup generators in the Anderson Creek Well Field at Pump Station Two, Well Six R and Well Eight. Routinely, the Anderson Creek Well Field provides approximately twenty percent of the city's water. And it serves as the critical backup water supply when the surface water system is shut down for maintenance or other operational requirements. The budget, uh, in this contract is two hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-four cents. Uh, these funds are budgeted in the Water Utility Capital Fund, so no budget additions or changes are required. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, any questions from council? All right, I guess pretty straightforward, buying generators, keep water flowing in case of emergency, is this okay on consent? Okay, thank you, thank you, Kami.
Thank you, council.
All right, up next, Mayor Wheeler is here to present, uh, the confirmation, reappointment of Joan Hampton to the Bermerton Housing Authority Board. Mayor Wheeler.
Well, thank you, council, and, um, well, Joan, um, Hatton has done a great job, um, as a commissioner, and she is, um. I'm proud to present her, um, or turn, another term on the permanent housing authority. And I'll, I'll just say that, um, the housing authority has been a, a wonderful partner um, through the, the housing crisis, uh, through the pandemic. And of course, now into this, this brave new future that we're heading into, I'm glad we have them as partners going forward.
All right, and, uh, you know, if there's any questions for the mayor, but, you know, this would normally be on consent. All right, all right, thank you, thank you, mayor. All right, up next, General Counsel, Business, Public Works Committee, um, Eric, are you gonna, are you gonna have, you're gonna?
No, I can do it, okay. So, uh, as far as public works committee meetings go, fairly light, uh, I want to say we ended, uh. Started at four fifteen, I think we ended probably around seven thirty, so fairly light. So for those that haven't been on public works, very rewarding, you learn a lot about. You know, like a better term, plumbing and stuff like that, streets, and it's very fascinating, don't get me wrong, but you're gonna put in long hours, so. Uh, we had like three general issues that we wanted to talk about, and we went pretty in-depth on it, um. Jeff and Anna more so than me, but, uh, that's because they're more in tune to Warren Avenue Bridge Project Communication was a big one, and I think we got some clarity from Director Nucky and his staff. The council will see a project update on that in a contract amendment, um, next study session cycle, so October twelfth. Um, the, the committee, council committee members were concerned about uh, having more public process before we narrow down the choices, and I think we've got, uh. Uh, I think the message was heard loud and clear, so I'm looking forward to seeing that come to fruition. Uh, we did talk briefly about the purchase of twenty twenty-three vehicles, uh, Mr. Motner, uh, presented today. The, uh, it was a good presentation, but it wasn't, uh, as in-depth as it was tonight, so I appreciate that, uh. More in depth and, uh, wasn't in our packet, so it was good to see it in our packet tonight. Related to Warren Avenue Bridge, there's amendment, uh, for the feasibility analysis with consultant, amendment number one. Again, uh, council will see that shortly during a study session. And then, uh, a, a couple of, uh, well, one big highlight, uh, we got to see what, uh. Bill Davis is gonna present, I think, out in Spokane. Uh, the city's gonna get an award or some kind of recognition for their beach sewer elimination program, that's where we're taking or disabling the beach sewer mains. And, uh, putting in, uh, individual grinders at the various houses and pumping it up to the the street, uh, sewer, uh, to get the, um. To reduce the amount of sewage overflow, hopefully that's, uh, going into our waters. The last thing, which took quite a bit of time, but I think was worthwhile, uh, was a, uh, visit of the road maintenance slash paving program the city does, and all council members subsequently received that presentation, pretty easy to follow, so even if you weren't in the committee. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at that and, uh, gain a broader understanding of what our priorities are. What our capabilities are, where the sweet spot, if you will, is in street maintenance. Um, and, uh, unfortunately, the, those streets that are in really bad shape, uh. There's not a lot of funding for that, so we talked about some kind of funding ideas and maybe it'll be brought up during our budget and maybe a council member or two will come up with, uh, a proposal, we'll see what happens. And that's, uh, the, the other thing is, uh, for council member, uh, issues, uh, I brought up, um. The paving condition over in, uh. Uh, we had a micro, I want to say microchip seal, something like that, anyways, we had, uh, over in the dockside neighborhood. And didn't quite come out as to expectations of the residents. There's been back and forth between the administration, public works, and, uh, several residents of District Seven. And I'm happy to see that the mayor and Mr. Nucky are gonna go out and meet with some, uh, people that are largely representing the dockside neighborhood, I think, on this Monday, so I do appreciate that. And, uh, hopefully, um, some good will come out of that and, uh, we can move on. That's it, unless there's any questions. All right.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other input or announcements for the good of the order? Anna?
One thing that I, this is on me, I had forgotten to bring it up, was a request to Director Nucky or, um, Ned Lever to explain exactly what had happened with the sewage spill. Um, the mayor touched on that briefly in his mayor's report last week, um, about the F O G. But a constituent wrote in and asked the question that I should have asked, um, which was, how did it happen? What did we do, what are we doing to make sure it doesn't happen again? So I was just hoping that either Director Nucky or whomever, whomsoever is appointed in his stead um, could make that statement at either the next general meeting or uh, somewhere, just, I, I think that sewage spills is something that gets everybody really worked up and I, I think coming out ahead of the curve and saying, hey, we are human, we messed up, here's how. Here's what we're doing to make sure it doesn't happen again, I think that would be useful, I think people would welcome that. So I'm saying that for good of the order.
Great, thank you, uh, actually, Director, uh, Nucky, if you've got, uh, if you can answer that now, that'd be fine, or you can forward us something or?
You, you bet, actually, I, I already have, I, I forwarded a, a pretty thorough email that, um, that outlined um, the, uh, the two S S Os that we had recently, the reasons, um, for them, uh, the causes, the actions that um, we plan to take, and then, uh, there's some actions that we already have taken, uh, there's a mailer that has been, uh, put out, the, the most recent, um, sanitary sewer overflow was a result of a grease plug um, in a sewer line, and so, um, we, uh, we've taken a number of actions regarding that. I'd be happy to, um, to dig up that email and send it back to council.
That'd be great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, uh, reminder that the next meeting will be held remotely Wednesday, October fifth, twenty twenty-two at five thirty P M. Uh, we are busy behind the scenes finalizing details to transition to in-person and hybrid meetings, uh, moving forward. Please stay tuned, all information will be forthcoming, uh, thank you for your patience, this meeting is adjourned, good night, thank you.